Okay. We'll call our meeting back to order. Sorry for the tardiness. We were working on legislature time. It's almost time for them to come back anyway. So let's start doing everything 10 minutes late, too. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance and to lead us today. We're going to ask Ms. Shannon McKenzie to lead us in the pledge.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ms. McKenzie, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So our first item on the agenda is district highlights. This month, in a moment of weakness, America decided this would be School Board Recognition Month. So I see Ms. Krueger is going to talk to us a little bit.
Well, we can certainly tag team, but we want to share. First of all, we want to thank you. It's wonderful to have Ms. McKenzie as one of our leaders out here, as well as all of our directors out here, and our high school principals happen to be here. You have a whole little army of folks that you support every day in the schools, and we thank you for all that you do. In the spirit of that support, all of those school leaders have given a -- this will be a new tradition -- they've given you a shirt. Everybody has a different school, and it's compliments from the school to you, the shirt, and every year we will give you a different shirt. So that means when you go to their events or activities, you will be able to truly show your school spirit. So we thank you for all that you do for us every day. We're going to be ending the School Board Appreciation Month with a few other items. Each week you'll see a different kind of recognition. One of the recognitions will be on the cable TV channel the second week. Additionally, you'll be seeing something in the community news next week on Tuesday, and at the very end, students are writing thank you to our board, and you'll be receiving cards at your final meeting. So thank you for all that you do. Should we clap, you all? (Applause)
Looking -- sure. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. It's been presented as there a motion to adopt the agenda. The motion is your second. Thank you. The motion is second. Discussion on the motion. There's none seen. I think we're ready to vote.
The motion be open?
Our next item on the agenda is public communications, and I don't believe we have any for the evening. So we are ready to dispose of our business.
Mr. President, as I know that the Board of Education approved the items of business by consensus presented and authorized the Board President and Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Is there a second? Dr. Anderson, any discussion on the motion on any pace? There is. I think we are ready to vote.
Vote is now open? All votes are in?
Our next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. We actually have two items on the Superintendent's Report. One of them is probably going to take a lot longer because in order to save some folks' time, even though another one will be with us, I think we probably want to have item 92 point to the principals.
So our high school principals will come forward. Our high school principals will come forward at this time as we bring up the PowerPoint. It's just one or two slides, and these are not all of our high school principals, of course, but these are the three traditional schools. This awesome group has been meeting and talking about various topics, but we, as a new tradition again, annually, you know, midterm, we're going to pick a topic and have some reflection about high schools and focus on a particular topic. This particular topic for this year was focused on time and time utilization. And so they'd like to share with you some information in that regard. We also know there's been discussion on schedules and what that'll look like, and so that's also embedded in here. So I'm going to turn it over to the high school team to share a little bit about that work. We'll turn to the next slide, Mr. Rousseau. So the high school team, as I've already shared, the topic is scheduling, and they're really here to just answer questions that you might have. The first three things are to talk about their beliefs, and I don't know if you all can see those beliefs rather than me reading them. I guess if you all want to just share what's on that one slide. Mr. Dick, if you can, I don't know if you can see it from your end.
I can see it.
And then, as you have questions for any one of the three high schools to dig a little deeper or to listen to their individual beliefs, and since it's three of you and three items, perhaps if each one of you take an item on a belief, and next steps, the same in that regard, and feel free to elaborate beyond what's up there, but for the purpose of keeping this sheet as short as possible, we just put a portion until it's discussion.
I'll take the first one then. So really, the first one, as we talked and discussed, it's just about time management, teachers utilizing the instructional time given to them, how to best fit that time, how to work activities in there that are most engaging for students so that our students get the most out of the time that we have with them in the classroom. We've talked a lot about professional development, some of the things that we believe we need to continue to push for teachers to do in the classroom during those times, and how we support them throughout the year and being able to do more of those things for us, like cooperative learning, for instance, or instructional practices where kids are more involved and engaged with learning rather than just listening to a teacher lecture and present in front of a classroom.
All right. Item number two.
Good evening. We realize that our schools have become semi-homes for many of our students. There are non-traditional settings in which our students may reside, and so the more we can provide supervision programs and ways for them to acquire credits, then the better off the students are, and the few students that we might lose to society, I suppose, that are not prepared for being productive. So through things such as night school, offering earlier morning classes for those that might be dropped off early in the morning because the parents' only mode of transportation is a single vehicle that would get the child to school and then get themselves to work, and then providing opportunities for teachers to work with our students to help increase the contact time that they have with them to help them be successful in their learnings, then those are some of the things that we had looked at as ways to further serve our students in our traditional school setting.
The last one really addresses a good evening, really addresses something we've talked a lot about, which is our need to see students on a daily basis in a different manner than just the academic setting. With the arrival of career and college readiness are now just post-secondary readiness, we're finding that things like our career cruising and our ability to talk to students about their plans and what they're doing, as well as helping them traverse high school space, is really important. Our counselors may have, you know, 300 students apiece or more in some cases, and they can't get to every single student, and through using our advisor-based time or, you know, the Trojan time, Charger time, and Scott time, we can get that whittled down to where one person is working with 20 to 30 kids in a smaller setting and coordinate that with our counselor. So that is something we see a need for in our current schedule. We only have that time one day a week for about 30 minutes and then an hour moving to get assistance, and that 30 minutes just simply isn't enough time to do all those things we need to support students other than just content. We've also talked about the fact that our Trojan time allows for intervention. Sometimes students need individualized instruction and extra help and support. Some of that we do now where they're able to move and see instructors or make that work if they've missed a school or they have jobs or those kinds of things. So by allowing some freedom with our schedules and some time each day for that Trojan time or for some time to do those kinds of activities that we're needing, we have the freedom to make that fit each of our schools and fit our needs and our student bodies.
And as we talk about next steps, and we'll turn it over to you to start with item one through three, and then when they conclude, we turn it over to the Board to share or ask questions. But next steps on that note.
For us, really, as we build our schedules and go through the pre-enrollment process for students to look towards what we want to do in the next year, typically, we do most of that enrollment and those things in the January, February timeframe. We work on schedules through March and April, and we try by May to have our schedule pretty well finalized for the next school year and let students have a better idea of what that may be. In order to meet some of our needs a little bit and try to work with one another to be a little more flexible where we can about some staffing needs and how we need to work a little better with one another, we really feel like we need to boot that timeline up a lot and give more time within this semester to be able to do that. And so as part of our discussions, we've all agreed that we're going to try to ensure that all of our course requests are completed by the end of February with all of the enrollment stuff for students. We're really prioritizing students at the high schools first. The incoming ninth grade students, they really don't have a lot of options. They're pretty much consistent year to year in what they take. We pretty well have that down. It's the older students that give us the more trouble where they have more flexibility in their scheduling options of what to take. And so we want to have that done as early as possible in February, where we can have a rough, good master schedule built early in March, and that way that gives us a little more time to see what exactly it is we need when it comes to staffing and flexibility and how we can work with one another to fill those needs.
Thank you. And he's taken one and two, so I guess the last person can come on up and talk about three, and then we'll open it up to questions. And one and two really should have been together because the idea behind all this is that kids, we hope that kids would have schedules before they leave for the summer. I mean, that's part of that piece, so those two really do go together. And so beyond that, once they make the schedules, we want to continue this dialogue and conversation. So I'll just read the third one and open it up to questions if that sounds okay. So the idea is that when they finish their schedules, then they will share those schedules with us because one of the hopes is to build in, as Mrs. Morrissey has shared, to build in some time. And so we had dialogue about what does that look like? What does that mean? We want to make sure it's philosophically in line with what the beliefs are and is appropriate, developmentally appropriate. So, you know, we agree that because the schedules are done early, that gives a really good opportunity to come back to the Board and share what those look like, and also to have discussion about instructional delivery and time and those pieces. Ms. Morrissey, at your building currently, because there's not the time built in, can you share the tutoring? I had the pleasure of sitting in on the conversation that they had, as has Dr. Hester has sat in on all their conversations. I sat in on the final one. But can you share that tutoring model that you have to put in place? While it's not ideal, this is an example of what's occurring now, and the hope is to avoid this and by planning a little differently for next year.
We have a very extensive tutoring program a year ago because we had a grant that we did not get renewed this year. So as the school year started, we had a number of students requesting, trying to go to teachers' classrooms after school and get help, really needing that tutoring. And it lasted until later in the evening. I think it was five a year ago. I wasn't there, but they don't wait lengthfully after school. What we ended up doing is I gave up collaboration time, which is kind of hard to let go, but we have certain staff, and once we'd gotten into our Thursdays with collaboration and technology days, we've been supporting conversion to using group classroom and using, really utilizing it as a staff. And once people were comfortable with that, we knew they were posting things. I give up that day one day a week, and they get a second plan, and I have a group of teachers who voluntarily signed, and they stay after school till 4:15. I'm gaining time. They're giving up. I'm giving them the 40 minutes during the day, and we're getting more time back after school, but we go till 4:15. And one room, we have the four content areas every one day a week at least. So it's not ideal. It's not as good in some ways as what we had a year ago, but at least we're offering something. So we've really had to be creative with how to do that, but it's been very difficult. And our students need that tutoring time. They need help. They need access to that. So that's just one way we've been able to do it.
So around March, they'll be coming back with their schedules. By the end of March or early April to have dialogue about what that looks like before they move forward. So we need to make sure that we are all in agreement about philosophy and in support of what this looks like for all of our schools, for all of our traditional schools. I'm going to open this up to any questions that you have. This will be an annual thing of picking a topic. Next year's topic will be different. Any questions that you have at this time over their conversation or knowing that you'll see them again in late March or early April?
Dr. McCarthy.
As you look at the advisor-based time and Trojan, Scott, Charger time, do you perceive there being kind of a set curriculum that will be used throughout the year? And another question is, are there opportunities offered by the way students are assigned to advisor base and whether they stay with a teacher the same year? I'm assuming right now that's probably not done exactly the same at each school. So seeing some uniformity to that and, you know, looking at the opportunities for if a student stays like in a cohort, you know, would there end up being a yearly curriculum or a four-year cycle almost, depending on how students are assigned?
I'll talk to that a little bit, at least from the Topeka West perspective. There is some curriculum that goes weekly, monthly, throughout the year that we would need to do. So the career cruising, we would really like to expand on some ACT opportunities and what we do with teachers there and how they embed that in their classes. So before the winter break, we were all able to send some teachers to an ACT training day. So we, I believe at Topeka West, had eight teachers that attended that from different content areas to come back and work with other staff members about ACT and ACT prep for students. So we see being able to fit some of those things in. I know we, at least at Topeka West, we would like to expand opportunities during those times to have writing centers for scholarship help and for college applications and for job applications and all these things that students need assistance with, but we find it very hard to get them outside of the school day to be able to stay and come into that. So we need to try and carve out, find time some way during the day that we can do that while they're there. And at least for us, we have a pretty scripted day by day of the week, how we do that and what students do those days where we try to keep it pretty organized and pretty, I guess, rigid to some extent in that we don't have students just going everywhere, going wherever they want, that we've got kind of set goals for them each day of the week and what happens during seminar. The teachers are pretty familiar with that. Ours do stay with their teacher all four years. We started a couple, I think, last year where at the freshman and sophomore level, and that would extend to juniors now, because our counselors and our assistant principals are divided up alphabetically, we divided our seminars alphabetically. So a teacher knows from my group of students, I go to this counselor and this administrator. It also gives that counselor a smaller group of teachers to work with when it comes time for pre-enrollment for classes and advising. They just go work with their group of teachers that have their students, and so they work through those processes together as we go through pre-enrollment and career goals and all those things for students down the road. That's.
Thank you. Did anyone want to add to that? I see a head nod, so any small addition to that?
Just, we also require to do anti-bullying, sexual harassment training for students. That occurs during that time as well, which we would need to continue. We do by grade level instead of alphabet. That was largely because of administrating one of Ms. Patterson's positions. I took on seniors and couldn't really do alphabet. So we've moved to grade level. Our advisor bases are grade level, and they do stay with them all four years. We're talking with our academic counselors about whether they stay alphabet or did they see merit and move to grade level. So we have one set of people working with the same group of kids, and then they can work with the group of advisor base, so we can kind of have a school within a school, so to speak, with the support for the college programs.
I'm speaking as a former parent and are looking at night school. Well, I'm still a parent. Former parent of a high school student. So I'm looking at night school, zero hour, number two up there, basically. It was all I could do to get my student, who is a pretty good student, to go get tutoring, night school, zero hour, et cetera. So my question to you, how do you make that less punitive and make the student want to do those things?
So at Highland Park, we have a set of non-traditional students, and many of them it's a, it could be a resource or an opportunity for them to make up credits. We have many students who work overnight at Resor's and then try to make it to school in the morning, so the extended day helps them a lot. So as of Monday, it is our hope that we will be able to, again, offer the night school program through some grant funding that we received, and hopefully Darlene Palmer will be the one coordinating that, and she did it many years ago. So we have talked with some students yesterday and today, and they have credits they need to make up, and they're very excited about the opportunity to continue their school day and have time to work more on catching up on credits. So it may vary based on the school and the population of students each school serves, but I can definitely say at Highland Park, it's a resource that is much needed and I think will be very appreciated by the students.
Do you anticipate that being online, like an edgenuity kind of?
Yes, that edgenuity will be one option, and so the students would also be able to receive some tutoring help or mastery support in areas, especially with reading where Darlene specializes. But there will be a strict contract that the students will have to sign as well as their parents. So again, it wouldn't be punitive. It would be, here's an opportunity available to you, and if you'd like to receive it, these are our expectations, but these are the things that you could hope to gain.
What are the, I'm sorry. Just curious, on that program specifically, the logistics, where do the students who are not utilizing edgenuity, where do they go and?
Because of Garek, we have an optional tutoring setting in a room on the main floor, room 126, and they're there until 5:00, and they have their Garek tutors that serve all the students, not just the ninth graders. This room is upstairs. It would be room 203. And we make an announcement at 3:15 to students that if you're not here with the coach or a sponsor or a teacher, you have to clear the building and go home. That gives them about 10 minutes to catch the bus and go on home. Otherwise, they would loiter there endlessly because that's probably the warmest, safest place some kids have to be. So hopefully, if that's what they feel they need to do, they could enroll in Twilight School, get some tutoring support, and also be in a warm, safe place still if they know their parents are home.
McCarthy?
Just a few, and two more questions. Would extending the school day take care of a lot of your problem? Extra minutes?
Depending on flexibility for where we do, I think there's scenarios out there where yes, extra time would be beneficial in some way, but given the amount of time that we have, it just, you're stuck here.
Yeah.
If that amount of time was hard to be somewhat flexible and still get enough instructional classes, and so I think that would get pretty creative, what you're trying to do, so that I could see scenarios, like the other group, where some amount of extra time may be beneficial for some of these things.
Has there been any further discussion about pushing back the start time for?
Along with zero hour, we've talked about an eighth hour, and I know we presented a couple of years ago about start time for school being later. And I have a number of kids every day that we track who drop off siblings in this first hour, a good chunk of it, if not all of it, and they just can't come. So if we could have some flexibility with our staff in scheduling some people first through seventh, which is traditional, we have, 7:55 to 3:00, and then maybe some others that we schedule, teach two through eight. I have some staff that has issues in the morning as well because they're dropping off their kids at daycare, that we may be able to offer some classes in first and eighth hour that are genetic courses or classes, and students could shift either way based on need and then balancing that, because I don't want people to just kind of late because they can't. I want it to be need-based. But I don't know how quick we could do all that, but it's that kind of flexibility. And I know, we know that when you put us all on the same schedule, there are reasons for that. So I think what we really want to know, what we talked to Dr. Anderson about, is what are the reasons you did that? So we have to have, be having created certain time to get to T-CO or get to those programs. You know, what are the things we have to honor as we look at our schedules differently? Because there is need in some of our schools for shorter classes because of our students and their needs, and other places need longer classes, and they're okay. I kind of fall in the middle between. So we just like some freedom to do some things that each of our schools needs while still honoring your intent when you go to sign the same schedules.
Okay. Dr. Morris? I think our intent, and I can absolutely say, was having the freedom for students from one school to the next school to be able to take classes that weren't offered at one school. Yeah. And so, you know, I was in on the meeting that you guys did and heard what you exactly said, that, you know, Highland Park may be different from Topeka West as far as different scheduling. It would just, I mean, I think the flexibility is there for you to have as long as we don't have students that continuously miss out on things that they could have had from, say, another school.
I think, you know, I'll look to my other, I think, other board members to kind of clean this up after I say it. I think we also had some concerns. We had seen quite a bit of evidence and data that pedagogically they were saying it's better in many cases for students, especially those who may be struggling to see their teachers in some of the core subjects every single day in a much more regular, consistent basis. And that even when you do give the 90-minute period, which you would think, okay, well, that's more time, that should be a little bit better, but for people's cognitive overload, you know, like at that point during the 90 minutes, they don't pay attention anymore. And of course, then you throw in some of the anecdotes that we had heard, horror stories about, well, you know, just used to, you know, watch movies and things like that. Clearly, we know that's not the case in the majority of situations, but we were trying to get away from that and give you all the ability to give students what does them best, and that's more time with you, more time with educators in classrooms. If I'm wrong about that anyway, clarify.
You know, it also involved reducing from eight class periods to seven, and that added 30 minutes per week per class for students. There was a recognition that things like AP scores went down immediately after the block schedule was instituted back in the 90s. We heard that data back from AP teachers. Recognition that when all that you were doing was a block every single day, that in certain weeks, a student might see a teacher once, particularly if you have a student in an activity, they might be missing that final block, and you miss one block, and it, you know, it just, it goes on and on. It just was a strong feeling in part of the Board that that instructional model was not what was best for our students and that one... was not what was best for our students and that one of our strategies for raising student achievement would be changing that schedule and making it consistent. I think we also had some hopes that we might be able to make some creative use of things like kind of a distance learning model in order to open up singleton AP classes to schools that didn't have enough enrollment to merit. And because travel's difficult, obviously, to make that work. But, you know, could we make use of technology and other ways to broaden access to students? And certainly, what Mr. Wood says, absolutely correct, really finding a very inconsistent use across classrooms of that time. Some people, but not the majority, use the time well, and quite a few didn't. And any of us who are parents of high school teachers saw that. So that wasn't just, that was personal experience as well. So those are some of the thoughts that went behind the boards, very careful, very long decision, watching it over many years. The mobility of our students, too, of knowing that kids could go.
Yeah, I forgot to bring that up, because there was a big, big discussion about who got what and when. They even gave us a number.
They've explained it very well. I'm just going to switch gears here. One of the questions I've had many times have been the number of courses, of classes that are available to students who want to get into some of our, I have to go back to the old-fashioned term, but more vocational kinds of classes and their prerequisite classes they have to get into. And lots of our kids can't get into those. So I'm hoping that this mechanism, if you get started really early, you're not going to be locked into, we only offer this many. If you've got 200 kids that are on a waiting list that couldn't get in, how do you fix it? So I guess I'm hoping that this is going to give you some time to fix it, to figure out how to fix it. Because, I mean, those are kids we lose. I'm sorry, but we lose kids if they don't get those early opportunities. And you know that as well as I do. I'm not preaching to the choir here, but it has always been something that concerns me. But I heard that there were kids who tried on several different times to get into these courses, and every time got, you know, couldn't get in. And so that really troubles me. And so I'm hoping that this is going to give you an opportunity to actually zero in real closely on how many kids signed up for that and how many slots we really have, and how do we fix it so they can get in.
The fact that you've moved design.
You'll have to speak up. I'm really not hearing you at all today.
The fact that you've moved, like, design, the Beginning Facts course and the Integrated Computer course to the eighth grade level to help kids get in early would be helpful. We had over 860, that's the one number I can throw, 860 students, first or second requests to get into design, which is the precursor in the art class that won't mention. And that's a lot. So had we known that early and been able to ask, we would have been able to fix the staffing issue on that to be able to offer it. So you're speaking to what we've already been talking about in terms of our building.
Thank you. Because it's something I've been worried, it's something that's been a problem for significant length of time, and it's always been something that bothered me. The other thing, just adding to what Patrick said, you know, one of the things I keep remembering all these students I saw in coding classes, and they were, they had one place where they were doing all the, where the teacher was and the kids, and the group of kids were, where they had another group equally of the same size in another room. They couldn't see the teacher, but they were doing it on, you know, using technology to do that. And I was thinking to myself, you know, that is the perfect kind of class. It's all about technology, anyway. And you could switch the building that the teacher is actually in, if you need to do that. Every semester, you could just move that person around a bit, because it's really the technology that gets it to everybody else. It's like, I think, you know, we really don't really have to do anything like that. And like I'm thinking about the number, they had waiting lists even for the, they've got these two big classrooms full of kids. They're all boys, by the way, while trying to get into these coding classes. And they had waiting lists. They couldn't get, they couldn't take care of all the kids who wanted to be in these advanced coding classes. So, I mean, to me, that was a perfect example of how we can, why it was so important to have, at least sometimes during the day when you're all on the same, where your classes meet all at the same time, at the same length of time. Because that was the only way you could do that. I mean, but you could do it that way. Cover a lot of kids. I think, in my mind, that becomes a really cheap class to teach, one teacher and three or four different classrooms all across the building. That's good, that's good. Anyway, that was, that's part of my brain working here with this. Anyway, I'm glad you're going to be doing something here with the number of kids who enroll these classes, who want these classes. I think it's important to meet those needs, so, thank you.
Ms. Johnson, Dr. Anderson.
Well, definitely, thank you all for the discussion. You definitely have put a lot of thought into it. As I'm looking through the list of the examples that are up there, I started thinking, well, we're talking about time here, so we understand it's not a premium. What do you, as the leaders in the building, see as the most tightly held thing that we have to do as we address the needs of high school students? We definitely thought about it from the board's perspective and tried to put ourselves in the shoes, definitely. But as the leaders in those buildings, and we talk about time, and we see these needs for the college applications and scholarships, what would each of you say is the most tightly held thing that you feel is needed for our high school students?
For me, and I'll get told it's because I've been in middle school and that's not it, but I think it's time for us to remember that high schools still need to have some nurturing involved and that we need to have some time where we get to know kids and help kids with those kinds of things. And that we care about more than just the core content that we're teaching, that kids see as helping them take the core content and access post-high school with that, and that we help them get there, and that they know we care about them as a whole person. And I think that changes our environment. That begins to also address things like attendance and the tardies, because we're there for more than just my math class or my social studies class. So for me, to have more time, in three minutes a class, seven periods gives me 21. Four minutes a class, I get 28 minutes a day to do that without losing. I guarantee you, most teachers, even the best ones, their transitions, et cetera, lose three or four minutes in a class. If they'll work on their instructional, as Mr. Dick addressed, then we can pick that time up and not really lose it. And we need that other time badly.
I would very well agree with her. It's just, there's a huge need for kids to have that one person they connect with on a pretty regular basis, that they're going to see over the course of that time that they're there, that they can go through, that's going to help them, that knows what it is that they want to do beyond just a counselor. Our counselors have several hundred students apiece assigned to them. So when you have one teacher that has 15, 20, you know, maybe slightly over 20 kids that they see fairly regularly every day or a few days a week for a period of time where they work on these things, they know what they're going to do, they help them, advise them going on to the next year. We have experimented with some of that this year, and it's been pretty tremendous, the results that we're seeing. And so, and how much more connected kids really seem to feel to school and academically, attendance-related, all of those things, behavior-wise, I mean, we've seen tremendous increases in all those things in a very positive way. And so I think most anybody that we have, when you would ask what that is, it's that we, they have that connection to one person every day that they see that looks out for them, and we make sure that you're doing the things that you need to be doing. And like Ms. Morrissey said, they're young people, they need some guidance, they need some help, somebody's got to be there to look out for them every day. So I'm pretty much agree with everything she said.
Just as a follow-up, when you talk about things that are tightly held, and I know you have done this as a board, I've seen it during my time here, but just making sure that we maintain a rigorous curriculum. Because for many of our students, if they don't get a good, quality public education, their future is them, and we have certain blocks that occur for individuals who are poorly or undereducated. So I would hope that for whatever we do beyond scheduling or whatever, that we continue to maintain a rigorous curriculum for our students.
Thank you all very much. That's helpful to me and to all of us as board members. I would just like to quickly address those items that are listed there, because when I, the other thing I get concerned about is all of our students getting that opportunities. We often talk about how a lot of them can't be successful because they don't get exposure to certain things. And I know many students, just even the last year, that struggled with filling out college applications and scholarships, so applying scholarships. So as we talk about that process, is that, how is that to be implemented in this scenario?
You're talking as in a curriculum for our Trojan Charger and those times?
If that's the time you're using, yes.
What we've been doing, we have implementation teams this Collaboration Mondays, whether that becomes a committee or it's part of our, we went to late start, whatever we end up doing, whatever collaboration time we have, I have a team that oversees that and helps design the curriculum. In addition, I know that Segro Stedlier and the counselors have the curriculums for the sexual harassment and for the bullying, anti-bullying. We also have the career cruising stuff, and I know Eileen will guide that and direct that. So I think we have some place that are already guiding some of that time. And then internally in the buildings, whether it's an administrative team or whether it's an implementation team like my building, we'll be able to take the other remaining time and make sure that we're doing the other things, such as the ACT prep and the resume builders and the other things that we see as well as enrichment time. So I don't, I think we have systems in place already that will help us design that. There may be some real similarity between what's mobility has and.
One of the items I will mention with that additional piece, we're piloting at Highland Park and a couple of the schools, but Highland Park through the Conference of Schools grant, ACT prep, where we actually have the curriculum and the people that are coming in and having class. And so this idea of having a 30-minute class during, or doing scholarships, or writing resumes, or getting your job interviews done during that time, or doing career cruiser, that that builds a system where everybody has that period of time in which to do that with whatever your pathway is going to be. And so, again, piloting it there as a set class is up and coming. You have a questions for these principals before we transition?
Just two quick ones, I think, following up on what Ms. Morrissey said about nurturing high school students. I asked you this question a couple of weeks ago, but I'm interested in the responses from others. Is it unreasonable to expect every teacher to know names of every student in your school? I recognize some schools are bigger than others, but I'm guessing you, Dr. New, know most of your students, if not all of them?
I do, yeah. And if I don't know their name, I know their face. I definitely know their last name unless they're a brand-new student. And it isn't unreasonable. When I was a classroom teacher and I had maybe 110 students, I knew every single name. And I carried that over to being a principal. It's not unreasonable if you care, but if you don't, then it's an added burden to try and remember. I know classroom teachers who don't know the names of their student in a current class, and I may come and say so-and-so here, and they say no, and I'm looking at that person. So it's not unreasonable, and I think it's a process as we continue with professional development and with helping people realize how important it is to a child to be recognized on a personal level and how you eliminate behavior issues and you can just call that child's name, then I think it'll make sense. But that's my, hopefully, impassioned answer.
Thank you.
I would say I don't disagree that it's not unreasonable. Logistically, in our place, it's a little, we'll have some buildings that a student may never, ever go in, may never walk into, so that's logistic.
A challenge, a challenge. But even if, even if you knew half of them, you know, or you work on the freshman class next year, and everybody knows the freshman class, somehow, I mean, it's a process, right? I just think it matters to know they are held accountable and you know, you know, don't care about it. I may be in a minority with my colleagues up here, but I'm not necessarily bound to the thought that everybody's schedule has to be the same. I understand there's logistical opportunities when it is that way, and it may create some opportunities for a small set of students, probably, to take classes somewhere else or distance education, things like that. But I'm not necessarily bound to the fact that all of your schedules need to be the same. The idea of what's best for your students and that's what I have for, I have the data to follow that up with. Thank you.
We know you all want to stay here with us this evening, but thank you so much for the somewhat brief report. Although I'm teasing you all, thank you so much. You did a fantastic job. And this is a new, this is a nice process, gives us good dialogue about a topic, so we'll pull up to this plan next year.
Brief on their part.
Yeah, and it was brief on their part, that's right. On that note, we're going to transition right on into the strategic plan, if that's okay with you, sir. Since we know that you all have had the plans in advance, we will not go through every single sheet, because we gave you a hard copy. So you have a hard, the most recent hard copy should be copied and at your seat. Additionally, of course, you have the online copy. And we're going to go first to a couple of side pieces that we, a couple of pieces that we have in place. We also want to give a very quick and brief reminder, but we're really going to leave this to you to ask questions by topic. So the directors have really sat in the first two rows, and I'll be calling up the directors based on the goal that we're in. As we prepare to start, I will ask Mr. Russo, I believe there's a, I believe there's a one-pager of just kind of next steps, that if you can bring that up. We also know that this one of our principals is here this evening in part because she's within goal one, and we know her days are quite long. So I may just ask her to share a piece of what she's doing, because it will fit in later as well as it relates to our parent academy that we envision happening in the future. But just to, just remind folks, our initial steps, we have our stakeholder meetings, school visits and feedback, our surveys. The NEA took one of the preliminary drafts and gave feedback as well, and there were a host of other steps that we've taken. Our next steps, we anticipate, this is the first draft, we anticipate there could be five or more drafts. So we certainly think that there will be at least four, because this very initial draft only has some of the initial plans that we have, but we're looking for your feedback. And then we will revise. So after you share tonight, here's what will happen next. This draft, this initial draft, will be going to students next week, middle and high schools, so we can have continued good student voice throughout this, you know, just to give some feedback, just as you're giving feedback now that we do have an initial draft in place. So some student feedback will be gained, we'll be asking the high schools to definitely facilitate that and the middle schools as well. We are going to be targeting some benchmark districts. And when we get to the final draft, we're going to add that in as a strategy as well, but you may not see it as a strategy now, but it's listed there. On, in fact, on January the 20th, Mrs. Lucero and I will be visiting a benchmark dual-language college for all district. And that is within the plan, the link there. And it's really known for the Gomez-Gomez model as well. So we'll be looking at K-12 dual-language at that 20th visit. The, visiting the dual-language program, which I just referenced. And then after tonight, based on what you shared, this is going to also go back to Supes Council. Our very next Supes Council's meeting is on January the 10th, and we'll be looking at your feedback. Each department will have an opportunity to discuss these areas with their own teams prior to then, and then we can do some revising at that point, and we'll be bringing it back to you again following that. This week, we had professional development, so it gave us also some new ideas, and so we've added some other items in. On that note, as we leave from there, Ms. McKenzie is the principal that has joined Dr. Thompson this evening. Dr. Thompson will be here throughout to speak to early childhood. Mrs. McKenzie, are you still in the room, or has she? Oh, you're so tiny. So, Ms. McKenzie, and she did know all of why she's here, and I don't know how long she'll be able to stay. So I will, I'm sure she'll stay the full time, but I do want to be respectful of her time. So I do just want to divert just a minute. And Ms. McKenzie, can you come to the podium for just a quick minute? One of the items that you'll see throughout the plan are the, in the first section under teaching and learning, and she's under teaching and learning at the very end, you'll see, and I want you to kind of imagine this piece. You know, imagine our district having a parent academy where we teach parents and empower parents with advocacy. That's the Equity Council's piece they've taken on. So we have a parent academy piece in there. Some of that sparked as well from parent feedback and from what we've seen going on as well at, with Ms. McKenzie at Sheldon. Ms. McKenzie, can you kind of briefly share your strategy of, that you're using with your home visits, but also your tags, and what that looks like? So when she gets to, and if she's here when we get to that piece, you'll kind of know our envisioning is kind of really identifying all of the needs parents have and doing those wraparound services. those wraparound services. But can you share that briefly so they kind of get a vision of what is that, what could a parent academy, what does a parent training look like from your eyes?
Sure, and I actually have a set of tags where you can get them.
Oh, you have tags with you, okay. You didn't know I was going to call you up for this piece. So can you talk about the perspective overall and if you want to grab them, that's fine, but?
Sure. So as a Head Start program, you know, we really emphasize the whole child and knowing that the family is a piece of that whole child, and so we do probably just as much work on the level of the family as we do on the level of the school setting and our education component. Our family service staff, we've got four very amazing home visitors, we've got one coordinator of paperwork and enrollment applications, stuff like that, and then they have a supervisor. The four home visitors are all parents that have walked the walk, they are either current or former Head Start parents, so they really have the perspective that our families have and they've had some resiliency that they've built up through their lives. Part of our process, we've really worked hard to meet a systematic way of delivering services to families in the home setting. We feel like if we expect them to be comfortable on our turf, we should be comfortable on theirs. And so we have a system in place where our home visitors go out to the homes and they each have a caseload of approximately 55 families, and they get to know them, and our best way of doing that is through conversation. So we have a system that we use, and I can pass the tags around, kind of mimic a little bit from the Marine Corps with how they do recruitment for kiddos into that system, but what we have is values on it, things that we feel like are indicators of productive citizens and productive families and healthy families and safe families. And the tags say different things from education to health to safety, there's a whole host of things on there, but we ask the families to really think about those ideals and rank them according to their own priorities and what they believe is most important in their life, and that changes, and it changes every appointment we have with them or every drop-in visit that we have with them. But it leads to a conversation to say, you said that safety is important, what's going on with you right now and how are you feeling safe and what's maybe not feeling safe? It really then opens the door for us to be able to identify. We have then, we come back and we have a scoring kind of ranking system that we do that tiers out the families, so in an MTSS sort of format, we're actually using the same kind of method for our families, and that is how we determine how many visits the families need at the time. Some families need way more support than other families, some families we just see a couple of times a year, other families we see on a very regular basis. We have one mom that we write down, we see her almost daily. She just needs that much support in her life and that's okay because that's what we're there for because we want the kids to succeed that are in her home. So we rank them and then, you know, they change. They, today we had an incident with one of our families that got in a car accident, and so their transportation points changed dramatically because now they've totaled their vehicle. And so now we're focusing on, okay, let's access some resources and see where you're at financially and how's that looking because you're going to have to get another vehicle and those kinds of things. So that's part of it, and then the community resources that we connect with then to get them that support that they need is vital. And so we've been able to connect them with a lot of community resources then that are able to help provide assistance that's just naturally out there that we're not providing, but we're just bridging.
So with that piece, they have created an entire kind of parent education program really at their building, which, so we envision down the line really having a parent academy in place, empowering parents, teaching advocacy, how do you fill out FAS with them, I mean, just a whole host of different modules of lessons. So without going through every single item on here, Mr. Russo, I'm going to ask you just to go to the goals. And so as we get ready to open up, you know, so we're going to talk about Goal One, the items within Goal One, as we think about early childhood and planning to open up our early childhood center, that idea of advocacy and teaching parents, empowering parents is one piece, but the home visits is another piece, so that's where Dr. Thompson is anticipating using her Parents as Teachers program to really buff up the home visit piece and really get more access in that regard. The other items that I'll just briefly mention, the first person that's going to start off is Ms. Wallace, and we're going to just stay stuck on the, until you, as you ask questions, so we're not going to scroll the whole time. We've talked about this format, so I'm not going to explain the format again because you all know that. We're just going to go to the goals, which is that page there. So under student learning, and we're going to stay on that page, so under student learning, Mrs. Wallace is going to come up at this time. Thank you so much, Ms. McKenzie. So the items that are under this first goal, you have four different items, and one is, Ms. Wallace will talk about academic achievement, or, I'm sorry, answer questions that you have about academic achievement, her early literacy goals and those other areas. Mrs. Curry will follow her, and again, rather than them presenting, they're here to answer questions that you have, but we envision a K-12 via literacy dual-language program over this five years, and that's what we want to see happening, and we're going to be partnering with Dr. Gomez to help shape what that looks like. And then their early, the KG readiness piece, we've kind of touched on it, but they will go much more in-depth when they get to their piece based on the questions that you have. So Mrs. Wallace is here to answer questions. As you have your packet, if we can just open it up to, you know, the goals under Goal 1.1, and this is a lengthy document, but if there are questions or points of elaboration that you'd like for Mrs. Wallace to give under the document, she'll be prepared to do that. Now, if you would prefer that they also present and read through it, again, you've read through the document overall, they just were going to listen to your questions and expound beyond the general piece that we've already given. So I'll turn it over to the board if there are questions on Goal 1.1. Ms. Wallace is prepared to answer any of those.
Yeah, first question, I guess, before we get to 1.1, so you mentioned the tags and you passed them to us, but sorry to belabor it, but would you mind explaining just a little bit, I guess, each one of them, how they work and yet?
So Ms. McKenzie, as she comes back up, and one of the items, and I'll just mention to this piece as she comes back up and how this is used, so when you do a home visit, so the first piece is we're expecting for home visits to expand. When you do a home visit, and she has an entire spreadsheet that goes with this, but you want to explain what happens when they go there, and then, and then this is how we will begin, not just through the tags, but the idea of wraparound support in the, you know, couple of minutes unless they need you to expound beyond that.
Yeah, so I just put a jolly rancher in my mouth. So basically what we do is we take the tags off of the chain. Our family service workers love the chain because they wear them all day long like they're prized possession. We actually fight over tags in our building, so they're a big deal. Staff will tag each other out, things like that. It's just, it's important to know what your priorities are in life, I suppose, and sometimes you don't think about it unless you're holding them. And so they take them, they're not on the chain, and they just simply put them in a line, one being what's most important or most valued at that time, and then it just goes down from there.
And Ms. McKenzie, they would be the parents, so at a home visit, they then give those to parents and tell parents to categorize what's most important. And then from that, they, in that, that Mrs. McKenzie has created her own electronic database, so there's a color-coded chart, and parents actually get points based on all of those, and depending on what areas of greatest need, then that's then what the Family Advocacy Center, imagine this district-wide, would then be targeting. So if you need an employment, then part of what they'll be targeting is addressing that. If you have domestic violence, we may be partnering with YWCA. So it's this intentionality behind those services.
Yeah, and we've actually color-coded also a resource guide for our family advocates because they don't always know all the resources. We try to provide professional development for that. We take, we go out in the community, we've been to methadone clinics, we've been, you'd be surprised at places that we've taken our staff to familiarize them with the resources out there. But we are creating an ongoing document that has what they can do for each item. So if you, I have a spreadsheet and it's color-coded with each of these values and families kind of get ranked along so you can see where their highest needs are or where they're doing really great at, and then those highest needs, those family advocates can then reference the document that has suggestions on how to help that family with that need. And if we were to have a parent advocacy center of some kind, likely it would be nice to have resources and a location where they could be at to access all in one spot and not have to go all over town using public transportation to get help.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering that question. I mean, that's, I absolutely, I have a great faith too that this is going to work just as we say it will because I recall when a certain somebody was the principal over at Pine Ridge and we had a similar setup where we had computers in the computer lab, a closed bank and all of those things, and the stories that came out of there from parents doing everything from being able to close their family for the first time to finding a job because they got some help, you know, in the computer banks. I'm really thrilled and excited. I won't talk too much about this until we get to that part.
Well, and the resources provided really do make a difference. I mean, last year on our concern sheets, food was the third top concern, that our program had concern sheets on which are documented, concerns on our students that we have. We implemented our food bank this year at Sheldon and it's now not even one of our top concerns, it doesn't even rank up there, so.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie. And at a later meeting, perhaps that's even a topic when we talk about what does this family advocacy piece look like as a, as a topic for you to learn more about. So with that, envision that piece being district-wide and that's in here, so if we get there and she's not there, you have a piece of what that looks like. Mrs. Wallace is here, if there are any questions in the area of Goal 1.1, and she is ready to expound, and if you don't have any of those questions, then Mrs. Curry's going to come right on up and address any questions with Goal 1.2. So 1.1?
So I see, Ms. Kirk, and also Dr. Curry.
Just one thing, I'm here, when you're listing the, on the front page, I think it's still there, that you list state-level assessments, advanced placement, achievement, ACT composite scores, kindergarten readiness. Well, above there, you have your statement says that they'll demonstrate academic growth and will have equitable access to academic opportunities, and I couldn't find any place in there where we were addressing the equitable access. So I did, either we want to take that out because we're going to do it someplace else, or, or we need to put something in.
Can you reference the page number?
Okay, you're right on the very first page, strategic plan goals, and the goal number one is student learning, and under that very first one, you have your objectives.
Okay.
And you, but above that, there's one sentence that it says, "We'll have equitable access to academic opportunities." Now, we believe fervently that our kids all have access to equitable opportunities, but if that's part of your goal, you don't have anything down there that addresses that, so it's not, it's not that we shouldn't have it, maybe just don't have it there, because I know we talk about those kinds of things other places.
Yeah.
So that's my question, whether they need to be someplace else.
That's a good question, and this is probably good to get that out early as we start because as I read this, I kind of automatically, I'm assuming and I know what it does when you assume, but I give credit that I think when you start talking about things like kindergarten readiness, when we talk about early childhood education and all the things that you just spoke about, and broadening the access to more of our students to make a little district-wide thing, I assume that that's what you're referring to in terms of equitable access, broadening access that way. But I think Ms. Kirk is probably correct in the sense that we might want to just go ahead and spell it out that explicitly.
In or direct and explicit?
Yeah, so.
And if it's, if it really is better handled someplace else, I don't have any problem with that.
No, I think you're right. I think it's best handled here.
Okay, well, fine, I just, it just needs to, somehow we have to have something that, because if we have it in there as a statement, we have to indicate that we've measured it and that we're doing that, and, and.
At the end of the day, we're all about teaching and learning. I think that's the right place to put it. I'm, I will admit my own bias, I assume it there because I like it.
Yeah, I agree.
And so that you know, our team, they brought their computers, so they're making adjustments and notes in real time, so thank you for that.
I still have, I have a couple more on that, too, though. I really got carried away on number one, so watch out. I already talked to, really, Ms. Wallace about this because there's nothing in here that puts, indicates elementary school a priority that the board had and has had for some time, that children be through, you get it or get it in there?
The interesting thing.
You just put it in the new one, I didn't see the new one, so we didn't have anything in there with elementary school, and our priority was to make sure that our children were on grade level by third grade. Actually, we were hoping it was first grade or second grade or somewhere in there, but that was the bottom line, they had to be by third grade, and we would have things to implement to make sure that happened. My, my bottom line is that if it's something that we're doing, but if we don't put it in our strategic plan, then it loses its priority, and I think it needs to be in the plan. And she did put it in, so thank you. We talked about this morning over breakfast, so I wasn't sure it was going to be in there. And the other thing I have is number one.
And I'm sorry, the page number you referenced, do you have an older copy of the strategic plan? Because on 16, Mr. Wilson's pointing out that it's not on the page 16, so we can look at what page number that is on?
Seventeen.
It's on page seventeen.
Early literacy, okay, perfect. So, yeah, our page numbers are off by a couple pages.
So we, we likely have the most updated version, so we'll go to that section, and if we have, if we have another copy that's the most updated version, or if you don't have the most updated version, we may have another extra copy that Ms. Kirk can give, so maybe one can drop.
Google Doc is accurate, all right? It's being updated now.
That is correct. Google Doc is accurate and your, and your hard copy's accurate, too.
Well, the Google Doc is more up to me, but our copy, the hard copy doc is like three copies.
Me, you couldn't?
I know, I know.
I know. And I didn't, and I have to apologize to everybody because I didn't know when I was doing it on the Google, the document itself, I thought I had done all of it, it was just me, so that I could remember what I had done, and then I get these phone calls, and I don't know what they're talking about at first because I just thought it was for me. So I apologize, I've learned something about technology that I didn't understand before. The other things I have down, I, on number one, Goal One, if you had the action steps and you had the resources needed, larger pool of substitute teachers, funding for substitutes, funding for teacher stipends, I guess my question is, you know, this is obviously, it looks like we're talking about making sure that we do some of these things during the school year, and I thought that we, that if we're really thinking creatively, we might want to go back to doing some of the things we did at one other time where we actually brought teachers in. It costs money to do that, but it was better than having to pay the teacher and the substitutes when we offered special programming at off times, where there's not classes.
And we have for several years offered our summer academy of professional learning, and we continue to do that, and that is in fact a less expensive option than pulling in substitutes.
Right, that's why, that's why I underlined that. It seemed to me that that's what we should be looking at. We know dollars, you know, we're not going to get any more money next year, anybody believe we are.
Well, one of the reasons is that when we offer professional learning in the summer, during summer academy, it's optional. When we offer it during the duty day and provide a sub, then we can ensure that 100% of the fourth-grade teachers hear the message as opposed to those who option or choose to come during a summer session. It's one of the reasons for some professional learning to occur during a school day.
Well, I hope that we, that's why I said that. And the other thing I have was under, under number two, and I was just asking why, why we didn't include, there was no one from assessment there because they're the ones that have to do the stand-stripped stuff, it would seem to me, I mean, if you're trying to make sure that stuff, it hooks together, they're the ones that have this, the stuff there to help you do that, so I.
Absolutely. Well, I'm always willing to share with Ms. McKenzie.
Well, I figured, I think I need to do some more work, but I could just, you know, I'm trying to think of my own logic, and then I had a bunch of them, and they really had to do, it's three through five, to tell you to talk, to look at whether those things were actually going to tell us what you think it's going to. I mean, there is a, we're going to have the annual teacher, like number three, we said they're supporting new teachers, but does it really make a difference? They might tell you it makes a difference, but do we really see difference in their teaching of skills? That's what we really want to hear, and so I wasn't sure, I have no problem with any of those things as resources, I was just asking, and all the way down that horn, about three through five, there, the same kind of question came to my mind. Is it really, are we really going to have the data there from what you're looking at that's going to tell us, does it really work?
Well, self-reporting, I mean, that's, that's one, that's one piece of data.
That's one way.
That's one way. Through the principal walkthrough tool and through coaching conversations and modeling in classrooms and their observations and feedback and the growth with particular teachers, but then that, that's a competence issue because coaches and teachers work with some confidentiality, so.
And I mean, I just, I'm just, I threw those out because they keep hitting me as such soft mechan- soft mechanisms for trying to decide something pretty important.
Impacts, yes.
And so that's just all I'm, that was my only comment about that.
Ms. Kirk, it's something that we're doing already and it's, right? I mean, I would hope that we're coaching our new teachers and struggling teachers and, you know, so as part of a strategic plan, it just seemed kind of, we're doing it already, I hope. So it didn't have a lot of impact when I read that.
Yeah, well, my point was that I think the research that we saw on coaching and some of, and sometimes the mentoring was that the outcomes, there was a research project that we saw early on in my career here, it really looked at it as it wasn't really helpful. And so, in the way people thought it was, should be helpful. And so I, that's where my questions are coming from. And this is the best we can do, I think that's fine, but I just want to make sure that we think that through carefully and think about, does it give us the, does it answer the question? Does it help? Do we make a difference? Does it help kids in learning? I mean, it's outcome for kids, right? So I just, I just.
To your point on number three, then that would be one that we would eliminate in just, in terms of that language for Dr. Mickelson mentioning the supporting new teachers that are struggling is an ongoing piece. Some of these other areas, though, are items that are being done in greater depth or perhaps slightly different. Thank you.
Maybe there's something we do differently to support new teachers, right? I mean, they need our support, but it's, the objective of supporting new, struggling teachers and personalizing timely modeling, co-planning and co-teaching and co- is just, I hope we're doing that as we speak. So maybe there's implementation of some new method that we do so that we catch them sooner or something like that. I mean, I'm not necessarily suggesting we eliminate it, I just wonder.
And we are working and I think it's also in here someplace around a new teacher academy that meets more consistently and regularly to provide them supports and a series of professional learning opportunities around a particular topic that they may be struggling with.
Dr. McCarthy, did you have one? I'm sorry. Well, we really were just sticking with Goal One, but because academic achievement is, there's so much in there and I knew that Ms. Kirk had items from her wonderful notes in Goal 1.1 and 2 and now and so, but anything in Goal One that Ms. Wallace is able to address and if you, whatever goal you pick, if you reference the number, the appropriate director will come to the mic under Goal One.
So I'm looking at the objective one, the state level assessments. Number one, the professional development?
Yes.
So, so that's a page, now I'm looking at it a little, yeah, I guess it's still.
With your page thirteen, right?
So, so my question here is, as we look at PD, what consistently hard for teachers is a desire for better ability to individualize a PD plan? So that, and that seems to me to be, to be as strategic as we can at really optimizing every teacher's capacity. So I'm wondering, as we look at that, for example, a comprehensive five-year professional development plan, would that allow some flexibility for, you know, different levels of experience of a teacher and training they previously received and so forth?
Yes. I mean, and to a certain degree, we have moved in that direction even with what we did this last Tuesday with Writer's Workshop. We offered staggered or differentiated professional learning based on previous professional learning opportunities that they've had.
Right.
So that they're building on what they've already received.
Very good. Wanted to hear that.
And I think that the real key difference in this one, particular action step versus what we've done in the past is providing standards-based professional learning versus focusing on the pedagogy rather than, rather than looking at, for example, guided reading or workstations, we would be looking at how do you teach making inferences and what does that look like in guided reading? What does it look like in workstations? What does it look like with student practice opportunities? So, and what does it look like with whole groups? So you're, it's more of a standards-based focus?
It's very helpful to know what's kind of going to be about. I had a question that, on the next page, number six, support identified comprehensive schools and establishing a set of non-negotiables. Someone expand more on that, got what that refers to?
The, with the comprehensive schools, some things that might have some continuity between the three schools as far as how they're using their resources, even perhaps job descriptions, some scheduling that's consistent between the schools.
Kind of what would guide that decision-making?
A team collaborative process with those principals and leadership teams and people from teaching and learning, assessment and evaluation.
And non-negotiables would be based on student achievement?
Student achievement and some of the risk factors that they currently were identified for.
On number nine, looking at grants, I guess, you know, one discussion we've had in the board over the various years is it's always a challenge to, obviously we're trying to get as much funding as we can, especially to fill gaps when we're not adequately funded by our state. On the other hand, we also can't chase grants and I'm always concerned about, sometimes it seems when you get in a grant program, the requirements can be quite onerous for staff and I guess I would just want to pose caution about, you know, making sure that the cost-benefit analysis works out to our advantage, that we will feel that the program proceeds.
Benefits outweigh that.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, and then this is just kind of a clarification on the next one, on number ten.
I actually scratched that one.
Oh, okay.
Simply because we have kind of all wrote our individual goals and I had not looked at Dr. Thompson's goals.
Okay, okay.
And the whole intent of that was to be directed towards the new KSD outcome of kindergarten readiness.
Yeah, okay, very good. That's all I have.
Any other questions from board members on Goal One? No, I have a couple. So first of all, I want to just go on record and affirm my support for the vision in the Family Resource Center. I think it's an excellent opportunity, especially when you're going to do something like early childhood education, which we know is going to make such a big difference for students' game ratings, just change the trajectory really of families, to have the opportunity to grasp on to families and what they're doing, get parents while they're still really, really, really interested in them. So I think it's a wonderful idea and I'm excited about that. Speaking of that, question I did have, Shanner Facility online, it's page forty. On the, on the new one from today, I'm looking at number four in the early childhood section. So I wanted to know, so I think it's an excellent thing to, and it's something we've been wanting to do for a long time, it's overdue, I think it will take benefit for our staff to make this also available to the children, staff, it's going to happen as we do so. Could you walk us through a little bit of kind of what some of our options are, at least, or how you go about enrolling the students?
Right.
What's associated with that?
Well, we've looked at a number of different options and we actually had a planning committee, Mr. Woods. This was probably a couple, three years ago. We had a team of people that looked at options. Fee-based was definitely a consideration and as I've talked to Mrs. McKenzie, we both agree strongly that we've really segregated our poorest kids at Sheldon because they're high poverty and so one of the things we'd really, really like to do is to have Shanner and Sheldon be blended and so half of the kids that are Head Start would go to Shanner and then we would have community kids, district staff if their children, if they wanted their children to attend. Dr. Anderson and I have also had conversations, we'd like to be able to scholarship some kids who might not be able to afford a fee-based program. And so one of the things that I think would be very helpful is we would, I guess, require, it's kind of a strong word, but at least if you were a district employee and you got one of the slots, we would only accept payment through bank withdrawal or whatever it's called. And so there's no fee collecting at the building level because I just think that would become a nightmare for staff. And so it would go into a fund that would help us support that program, pay teacher salaries, pay para-professional salaries, et cetera, et cetera. So it would be a blend, when we say economically blended situation, so we would have kids that, whose parents are paying for childcare or preschool somewhere in the community, but we would offer it at a better rate than probably they could get in the community, but it would still be incredibly high quality.
Licensed teacher?
License, oh yeah, yeah, we wouldn't do anything but licensed teachers. We would have a teacher and a para in every classroom, we would have seventeen children, we'd basically be following the highest standard, which is the Head Start standard.
And so, you know, as we talk about these things, spell over beauty, of course, is a recruitment tool.
Absolutely.
For all these teachers, so should they read it in the newspaper, then, you know, they take a different look at public schools. So talk to me a little bit about the process for, you're going to braid the funding really like this, so you can actually blend your classrooms. I understand, you know, US Office of Head Start has a little bit of.
They absolutely do. They would have to approve this and we have such a great relationship with Region Seven. I don't see that as an obstacle. Shannon may feel differently, but I think we both agree that they would see this as a positive move for all kids that we're serving.
I agree. It'd be, this is kind of why, when I was on Head Start Policy Council years ago, one of the things I used to always bring up, the reason why the district wanted to get involved in becoming a grant team for Head Start, it allows you the institutional capacity to use some of the top-notch standards that you are required to have at Head Start and kind of bleed those over into all of your program. Now, initially, we were doing this over long-term childhood education, but it didn't matter. Now that we're going to be doing this much and total children served will go to nine seventy-three, that's still the correct number?
It should be, yes. We would, we would have a total of, with Sheldon now having thirteen classrooms, we would have fifteen classrooms at Shanner, that's what we planned with the architect, so twenty-eight classrooms times seventeen children per classroom. And we would have blended model just like we do currently at Sheldon, so we would have five three-year-olds and those kids would get to loop the next year and be with the same teacher, which has definite research advantages. And, you know, we've, we've really looked at this model for many years, trying to figure out what's the best thing for the community and for our staff. And actually, I've had two emails this week from teachers who want to be in the program, but they say, "I don't have any qualifiers." And I'm like, "That's what our funding is based on, I'm really sorry."
And so together with all of our students from the Kansas Pre-K Program and the other things we do, Pine Ridge, our other non-Pre-K, the state Pre-K program classrooms that's got licenses like that, our capacity will be?
It's, that's the nine seventy-three number.
Okay.
Or actually, I, you know, I need to go back and look at my, I don't have my numbers right in front of me, but if you do the math with the, we currently serve two twenty-one at Sheldon and if you take an additional fifteen times seventeen, I think that turns out to be two fifty-five or some, two fif, somewhere in there. So between those two programs, we'll be at over four hundred and then you add in the preschool intervention program, which is of course special education.
Nearly a thousand.
Yeah, and a state Pre-K, yes.
Well, so really, you answered all my questions, but I soon would want to go on record to say that I fully support this. This is something that I know it surprises you to hear me say. It's been really important, it's been for a long time and I know our board supports it, I feel very strongly that this would be one of the most powerful things that we will do for children in our district. I'm really excited and look forward to 2020.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
Hey, I have a couple more questions. Let's go. Yeah, really, only one more question on what is in the new, new report, it's page thirty-five. Dual-language for. So just to kind of piggyback off of what Dr. Minkson said earlier, I want to kind of make sure it's heard and I get a chance to go on record to give my full-throated support to having nothing less than a fully two-way dual-language program with robust courses and I'm talking at the high school level. So this would take us from, we're already five and we're working, bringing six, seven, eight up, this means that P-12 would be fully there, nothing short of that and we would, as the best practices go, say the process on, we would actually have some kind of integrated opportunities integrated into our, our high school. I think, and especially after going to the meeting yesterday, I had a good ten with Dr. Gomez to take a look at some of the high school offerings at some of the best, the best practices, the best places. I think that's what we've got to have, we've got to have the Gomez and Gomez model, if you guys come up with a better model.
No, no, we're committed to Gomez-Gomez, absolutely. We're Pre-K through twelve.
If there is one better out there.
Yeah.
But I think that is the, the most clear framework that I have seen in my novice lay, non-educator view for doing this and doing it right.
I agree.
I also want to say, and this will probably come up when we move on to the next goal, I'm going to ask a couple of questions just because I want to know that there is a little bit more robust discussion when it comes to recruiting teachers, since that's always our, I think it's challenge, we've got to fill it. And one thing I can say, I'm really excited about the fact that there is new specific references to recruiting, but hopefully we'll be as creative as we possibly can, maybe even have some kind of goal, X amount of partnerships that lead to, whether they be with universities or service centers or whoever, that lead to having a fully, a list.
Well, we're looking at right now, working with Green Bush, everybody, that, that, those wheels are already in motion.
Excellent. Now, they're going to start doing something with Puerto Rico.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm going to, yeah, that's, that's what we're working collaboration with Green Bush. In fact, Carl Nolan just sent us a packet of information for Melanie Stuart Campbell to forward on to her cohorts in Puerto Rico to kind of get that all rolling. But one of the most exciting things I heard Dr. Gomez say last night was that, because when he was talking to me about, you know,
was that, because when he was talking to me about, you know, the PSJA School District, the five high schools, the program they have going, and what an elite program it's become and how these students are going to Ivy League schools on full scholarships. And he talked about now they have a...
What, or state universities, they're good too?
What's that?
Nothing.
I'm just, I'm having trouble hearing, I've gone to Golds and kind of having trouble hearing. Okay, well, you're right, right. Of course, any university, any higher education. But he was talking about this, and he talked about that all five of the high schools now have this dual-language screen. And I said, "How do you staff?" He said, "This has been going on long enough. We are almost able to fully staff through students that have come to the program."
Yeah, he said they turn away teachers. I'm asking the same question.
Yeah. So, to me, that, of course...
That's what I said. I said, "Can you, can you give them a card?"
Yeah, send them our way. We'll send them our way. We'll take them. We may not be twenty miles from the ocean, but we've got other benefits. So, anyway, but yeah, it's definitely something that Dr. Anderson and I have been talking about and talking to Dr. Gomez about it. So, it's very exciting.
And so, to that point, the January twentieth visit is one, just to get a look at that Pre-K through twelve. There's the College for All program, which in later plan you'll also see embedded, which they have nine thousand high school students that all have access to college before they leave to have an associate's degree in this particular program. And so, we'll get a chance to see that. But then, there's another April visit in your plan. And that April visit will be a team of people, which Ms. Curry will be going on the April visit along with other individuals to, to really fully implement, you know, the vision, our vision is that bilingual, with the bilinguacy certificate of seal. And, and so, our hope is that that's one of the benchmarks from which we'll go from. Now, Dr. Gomez will actually be doing the rollout plan for us and helping us implement it. So, you might not see all of his pieces in there because that's, he's going to be working with us over time the rest of this semester.
Well, as long as I know, that, you know, that's the direction we're headed and you all for your vision. I think this is really the time to dream big. Strategic plans, you need to be aspirational because if something's a priority, we'll figure out a way to make it happen. So, this I really do think, the more I think about it, just for a city like Topeka, every year, right now, with our, our P-five program, every year, we're going to produce five hundred bilingual, bilingual people who can navigate all kinds of different cultures and understand how to make culture work. We're gonna do that every single year. So, over ten years, you know, you're gonna add a zero there. I mean, that, that's amazing if you think about economic vitality and what causes the growth.
It's exciting.
It's an exciting thing for us as a community. Definitely want to thank you for your work on it. I look forward to it. We're ready to move there and build the program and figure out where we want to.
I don't know. Did anyone else have questions about the language? Or are we, have we moved on to one point?
I think Ms. Kirk had a question and...
I've got two. One is, oh, we're still on the, the language issue here. I, I just didn't see anything that gave me a lot of encouragement in looking at the middle school plans, that you have thought more creatively about how to include in the Spanish classes that we offer, whatever core course we're offering in Spanish at the middle school, that we include some students who are in middle school, who are Spanish-speaking to begin with, to be in those classes. I mean, I can't think of anything more supportive and more, "Oh, my gosh, I'm relaxing here. I can be in a class where everybody's speaking my language." It's one, one, one class, or if it's a math class, or a history class, or whatever. If they have an opportunity to, to be in it, that doesn't take them out of the English language program, but it gives them a chance to have a core class that happens to be taught in Spanish that year. And I, and I didn't see that we were, look, talking about that in any way. So, I, I think that's important. One of the things, I mean, I'm gonna go back, you know, is to make sure the kids feel comfortable in, in our schools and that they're welcome. And what is more welcoming to be able than be able to sit in at least one class where you can read and talk with everybody in the class and it's the same language and it happens to be the one that you know the best. And so, I'm just saying, I, I don't, didn't see anything that led me to believe that that was any part of the thinking that needs to go on. And I think certainly when I go to the high school, that it has to happen there. But I, I just want to encourage that. And I don't know how to put that in there.
Well, Larsen, she'd like to speak to that.
Sure.
Good evening. Thank you for bringing that up. And, you know, being a native Spanish speaker, having grown up in a dual-language program in Colombia, I, I want to bring up the point that we want to make sure that the rigor of the program stays intact and...
At the what part of the program?
The rigor and the quality.
I'm, I'm actually just mad it be changed. No.
Right, right, right. So, for example, at Scott Now or at Winston Two, we look at the kids' level of academic Spanish to make sure that they are set up for success. So, I would love to see the native Spanish speakers have opportunities like that, even though they haven't come through the dual-language program from elementary. However, I would, like, we do English proficiency tests. I would suggest that we, if it's possible to incorporate in there some kind of Spanish proficiency test so that we don't put kids in there who might not be able to, or who might not have the academic Spanish and set them up for failure and perhaps have remedial courses or enrichment courses so that they can then go into these dual-language classes that are going to be very language, academic language-rich classes. So, I think there are two things. There are great opportunity for native Spanish speakers, but also, you know, with some criteria so that not everybody who has what we call the BICS, the Basic Interpersonal Communication Skills, can go in, but they also have the academic.
And I, and I understand some of our kids have not had an opportunity to be, when they come to us, they're not coming from Mexico as much as they are coming from other countries now where their education has been terribly interrupted. So, I know that that's a bigger and bigger issue. But if, by the time they're in middle school, at least, I think we need to give them a chance to do that. I mean, I, it's gotta be breath of fresh air for them to be able to sit in a class where everybody's speaking Spanish.
Right.
And it's the right thing to do.
It happens in elementary too, and it's great. Like, the non-English speakers, they come in and it's like, "Thank you."
Yes, yes.
And so, we have transitional programs to put them into the English...
Hopefully, we can do that. But I didn't see that in here, and that was my problem. And I was hoping that, that would, you would add a piece in there, that the recognition that we, we do want to get as many of our children into the, if they speak Spanish, put them in there.
I love that idea.
If they can. I mean, I, I just, and I, I say, "Well, we got a teacher that's teaching something in Spanish. They can seat two classes in Spanish." I mean, I, you know, I'm just...
And we want to preserve the language.
I do want them to preserve their language and feel good about it. And it also feels welcoming and supportive to be able to speak your own language. So, I mean, as somebody who's been in other countries where I couldn't speak the language, and it's really, really hard to get, to survive in, in Japan. So, just to hear it was being spoken, once in a while, you go, "Oh, there's somebody speaking English."
I love that idea. And I would love to help.
So, if I would ask that, that, would we make sure that it somehow gets in here and reflected that, that you're working on that? And that would be something for inclusion that's supportive and certainly a sub, a subgroup support. Yeah.
Thank you. So, that... Well, I think also it might be something we might want to consider for Jardine because we have our newcomer center there. And so, that's where all our middle school newcomers who are non-English speakers attend.
Well, if that's where you want, you do what, you can do, figure it out however you want to do it. I just want us to make sure that we, we think broadly and creatively about how we include these kids in our, now that we have a dual-language program, how do we get them into having an opportunity, at least experience some of it, even though they can't be in the whole program because they're too, they're too new and they're too old.
Well, and also, we had this conversation with Dr. Gomez yesterday about, we've been rather restrictive about who we let into the dual-language program because we're, you know, we're afraid that if they've been in the dual-language from Pre-K up through like third grade, and we have a fourth grader wanting to come in. And Dr. Gomez said, "If you have a new, if you have an ELL student, no matter what their language acquisition level is, if you have an opening in a dual-language spot for them," he said, "We recommend you put them in there." And so, that was kind of a light bulb for me. I'm, he already knew that and...
Right. But the thing we, I don't think we have been restrictive. The English, the...
I'm sorry, can you go to the microphone? And, and as she does, I do know that Dr. Gomez has spoken to us about this piece. When we see the other school, he talked about native, you learn better in your native language. So, he's been suggested having the ELL students go straight through that program. So, when we get a chance to see the school, we'll be able to do that. So, we'll definitely add the goal. Did you want to add an item and answer a comment on your question?
Yes. We, the only time when we are restrictive is when we have students who do not speak any Spanish come into the upper grades of the dual-language program because then that is a setup for failure. When we do have non-English speakers, not a word, they come in immediately and we do a transition to, like, putting them half a day here. Anyway, we have a way to do it. And I would love for every one of you or to bring these kids in, this model with NES kids works perfectly. One of our highest achieving second graders is a little boy from Central America who came here last year and didn't speak any English. And now, he's reading above all his peers in English. Like, he's like at a level Q in English and way above in Spanish because, one, he had a good education where he came from. And two, we were able to mesh and the positive transfer of one language to the other. It is beautiful. So, I would like to bring him and his sister in sometime to just show them off because they're awesome. So, we do allow every NES in, but we did have a question for Dr. Gomez about, you know, the fourth, the fourth and fifth graders. And he was like, "All of them." We're like, "Okay, bring them in."
So, that, that means a middle school too, which is what I was, because I think there's more flexibility and room there right now than to do that. So, anyway, thank you.
No, you're, you're okay. I just was gonna say, I think we just haven't got there yet.
I couldn't hear what you said.
Said, "I think we just haven't got there yet with fully developing those."
Right. But I'm just saying, I, I wanted to see that, that it's a, that's part of our mission is to include these kids.
Thanks.
And I have one more thing.
Okay.
It's all about, I think the language is now out. Keep quiet. One of the things I did earlier this year is I sent information, I thought, to Tammy and I think I sent it to Patrick about, and it happened to be in Seattle. I just happened to see it when I was there and I saw it in the paper, and having to do with a national mechanism for giving children credit for the language they speak when they come to the United States and they come into our schools. They can come, they have, the task can be given in just about any language you can imagine. And if they come into us with, with speaking Swahili, I'm, I'm just using, I have no idea. They, I know they can do that one. That child can take a proficiency test in that language, which is their first language. And if they pass this proficiency test, they can be given, they have a dual language. They, and it gives them credit for their language. And it gives them a foreign language credit because they can pass the test. And it's, you know, it's, it's in their own language. And it has done a wonderful job in a community where they have lots of kids with lots of different languages. And they're all having to learn English, but they're getting credit then, a language credit for being so proficient in their own native language in this country. And that really, it's another little thing that doesn't happen very often. I know we had some young people a few years ago who were from Kenya and spoke perfect English, but they also spent their, spoke their native language fluent in that. And I think that the young, one of them had another language that they were fluent in. Well, we could have given this, these tests to that young person, and they could have had this kind of sort of badge on trial in their case. What a wonderful thing. And we're gonna put on our diplomas, this is a national test, these are national tests you take. I mean, I don't know what it costs, but it doesn't happen very often. I gave the information to Tammy and, and I, I thought I would see maybe that in here. It's, it's a small thing we can do for kids. We don't have that many that come in, you know, a lot of different languages like we do in other parts of the state and other parts of the United States. But what they found was what it does for the kids. It just feels so good that you can get, you can get class credit for, for your native language. Because right now, you're spending all your time learning English and you haven't learned it. So, I mean, it's, but it's, 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 you have to, it costs something for the test, but we're not talking about that many children in high school who are going to be coming through with that kind of, of background. But I thought it was, again, another, another thing to make children feel good about themselves and being here and take pride in where they come from and their language. So, I mean, that's, and I just, I'd like us to take that and see if we can't figure out what that is. I know, I did send it to Tammy. I don't know if I did.
I don't think I got it.
You got it? Or you were even saying, "That's great. I think we should do that." And that's the last I heard. No, you, you got it. It was some time ago. But I, yeah, I, I just think, take a look at it. I, I think it's worth doing for kids. That's it for me right now. I'll show up.
I'll try to be brief here. When I look at Objective 1.2, parentheses nine, subgroup achievement, middle school numbers, is that just a continuation of the dual-language elementary? So, it doesn't represent any expansion of the program?
Are you talking about the middle school, the eleven program? Well, we are expanding it up to the ninth, eighth grade.
Right.
But we're also refining it in the process. We want to expand in other ways. We want to talk about committees or, you know, groups after school, teams, that kind of thing, Spanish groups. Clubs, thank you. I think the word, clubs. But we are also are very committed to making sure we're implementing the Gomez-Gomez model with fidelity from, for all three of the grades. And that's part of the refinement of it.
I appreciate that. And I, I think if, I'll reiterate this long-held belief of mine, that if we believe truly that dual-language helps both the native English speaker and the native Spanish speaker, we should be expanding, especially for the native Spanish speakers, so that every native Spanish-speaking student has that opportunity to attend a dual-language school, so that they learn at least part of the week in their native tongue. And so, I, I would like to see at least some consideration given to expansion of the numbers. And I realize we, we get held hostage over recruiting dual-language qualified teachers. And I just feel like we need to resolve that. I'm tired of, every year, it's, we can keep, keep it alive. I mean, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm not alone. I know that. But we need to resolve that and find a pipeline of student, of teachers that are capable of teaching and want to stay and be good and can continue to serve our students. But I think if, if we've got three hundred native Spanish-speaking kids joining the district every year and that number's continuing to grow, why don't we expand that, our dual-language program, so that those native Spanish-speaking students have the benefit of learning in their native tongue at least part of the day and then become more proficient in English at the same time? I didn't see any of that kind of thought in the strategic plan.
Oh, did you want a response to that?
No.
I was just, I'd say rhetorical, so...
Yeah, we're kind of more of a rhetorical...
And I, and I've added it to the, to the Google box.
Okay, there you go.
We will add an item regarding expansion. And so that you know, we are having our first hiring fair in Puerto Rico. Dr. Gomez shared with me that that's a, you know, a suggestion he's, he's made. And so, it just seemed logical to make sure it's there. The first one is a virtual fair, and then there'll be a second one, and there'll be an annual piece. So, the issue of difficulty with teachers should be less of an issue. The expansion piece, we agree, and perhaps we don't restrict ourselves to number listings there in terms of this many or that many, but just the expansion piece. Also noted, it will be updated in the next, in the next revision.
I think it needs to be considered, I think, rather than just, yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, so as we look at the, the numbers that are listed there, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, those don't take into consideration kind of, or do they, the automatic expansion that will happen?
It is the automatic expansion that will happen. Those numbers reflect the automatic expansion that will happen, both as we grow, we continue to grow horizontally and vertically at Scott. And then, as those numbers float into the middle school and the high school.
What's the fifth grade class look like at Scott altogether? Well, but the number in general, just fifth graders there at that four-track school is what?
Oh, in PSJA.
And, no, it's Scott.
It's Scott.
We have, we have...
Can you go to the...
We have classes to dual-language.
Since we're videotaping, it's hard to hear the audio unless you have the microphone.
It's like, it's like seventy kids.
I apologize if I've misunderstood. I'm sorry, Mr. Woods.
Yeah, seventy fifth graders every year, something like that. Yeah, seventy fifth graders every year, something like that.
Well, uh, there's potential to change to eighty because of the dual-language program expansion. Right, right now we have three classes, next year it should be four. We only have one non-dual-language class.
So it'll be a, about eighty?
Yes, sir.
Kids every year. So there'll be some, some guaranteed growth at Landon. Um, I, that said, I still like Dr. Mickelson's suggestion that we maybe explicitly call out in the plan that we are planning on trying to accommodate that, uh, that growth in any other, you know.
While we're dreaming big.
Yeah.
To Pica public, but to Pica public bilingual schools.
Yeah. I appreciate that. No objections from you.
Yeah, but twenty eighteen, nineteen, we should have approximately six hundred and fifty dual-language students enrolled at Scott alone.
Yeah.
So.
So we'll be, that's a big, big number.
Yes, it is.
How many native Spanish-speaking kids enter kindergarten every year in TPS?
In her kindergarten?
No, in just ever, in, in Topeka public schools, how many native Spanish-speaking kids enter school every year?
You're talking about all the schools throughout?
No, just kindergarten in Topeka.
Well, fifty percent of, right now, we have, um, about twenty-two kids at class.
No, throughout the entire district, how many students?
If there were a thousand kindergarten kids starting kindergarten next year, how many of those are?
I don't, I, I don't have that none on my head, but I can get it to you tomorrow.
Well, I, at one point I remember, uh, one of the reports we had, uh, was a few years ago from you, they were growing, the ELL subgroup was growing, uh, you know, to, it was like ten percent a year, and I think the first, um, two years that we have been on board from oh-seven to oh-nine, oh-seven to ten, they've grown enough to make their own small elementary school. If you were to, if you did that.
Those numbers fluctuate between nine and fourteen percent. Now, this year we had a decrease in ELL enrollment, which was an anomaly. I mean, it hasn't happened since I've been here in two thousand and nine, but I don't have the exact numbers of how many ELL kindergartners we have.
Five.
Hundred, okay.
So I think what, he, he's just trying, he's just wondering if we needed to gauge and prepare on ways to try to serve those hundred with, uh, while dual language is great for the native English speakers and it's great for bilingualism, we know that for our ELL students, it's a counter like programs.
Oh, yeah, definitely. So you, are you talking about like a one-way program, where you have all the?
Nope, I don't think he's, he's, uh, tossing anything out about any particular program. He's just saying, let's, let's dream big about having something that, some way that we can accommodate those new hundred kids every single year, and let's think about that in terms of capacity. Am I representing what you're saying?
I think you are, just so I'm clear, I'd like to know how many kids start school next August that are more fluent in Spanish than they are in English? Or started school last August and are more fluent in kindergarten?
In English than they are in Spanish or Spanish?
I'd like to know the percentage. So are we seventy percent English and forty percent Spanish, or is it ninety, ten, is it?
I don't, I don't know.
You said about a hundred?
A hundred students that are ELLs, but we don't know what language level specifically. We don't know if they're non-English speakers, or we don't know if they're high proficiency. I mean, we can break all that information down and get it to you, I just don't have that.
That number seems small to me. That's ten percent of our enrollment right here.
Yeah, it's about ten percent of the population.
Okay. Okay, so I, so we probably oughta, just for the second time, uh, move on, but I really do appreciate the line of questioning and, um, and the discussion we had, and hopefully what you're getting from us is kind of a sense of what we think ought to be included in the plan in terms of aspirations.
Yeah, definitely. Are there any other questions about one point, area one point two at all?
For anyone? Anything in one at all from anyone? Doesn't look like it. Um, I imagine that once we go through two, three, and four, we'll be a lot quicker, cause being the good board that we are, we're really focused on teaching and learning.
As we transition to goal two, Mrs. Nolan will go ahead and, uh, answer any questions you have. Were there any questions about goal two? Again, to keep in mind, uh, and when we talk about visions, uh, we've already talked about the, uh, bilingual C piece quite a bit, but we've also talked about, uh, in that plan, you're going to see some restructuring to add an instructional component into human resources, um, and that's from teaching and learning. It's also restructuring from having someone with principal experience helping with, uh, human resources. Questions for Mrs. Nolan, now that she's at the microphone?
Dr. Mickelson?
I had a quick one, let me find it here, but it was on increasing tenure from ten years to fifteen years, and I think that's a worthwhile goal, as long as those teachers are all effective. If they're ineffective, I'd hate to see us, and, and we've exhausted all coaching opportunities and tried to coach them to be more effective, but, um, I'd rather focus on having effective teachers, whether regardless of their year and years of experience, um, than just increasing years of experience.
So to maybe modify the goal to include?
Yeah, let me find, I don't remember which goal it was, um.
Yeah, it's two point two, and it's a retention goal. I mean, I think, I feel like I know what you're getting at. You, it's implicit there that you mean you want to retain your high-quality, you know, uh, teachers, uh, really effective teachers, and anybody who's not, you're just assuming that we know that you will have turned that over, but I think it's worth, uh, spelling out, being, being more explicit about that. Dr. Murphy?
Um, I am not sure exactly where this would fall, whether it would be partly under retention, partly under recruitment, but, you know, we've talked before about are there aspects of, um, the, both the salary schedule and, um, also some of our negotiated agreement policies that might, um, be able to enhance recruitment. So for example, I'm thinking about the number of years' experience that we give, um, teachers, uh, who are maybe looking at transferring into the district. I know that there are other districts that are hard-filled positions for, um, for example, AP positions, uh, or we'll really try and get our most talented teachers possible. Um, they may be more willing to give full, um, full years' experience, um, and I, you know, I hate to see us missing out on those people. I, I think that is something that could also be done in a very targeted way, we're concerned about the potential cost of that. It would be really looking very closely at, um, what would give us the most bang for the buck, you know, how do we, who do we best, um, track the most talented staff, um, without, you know, bankrupting ourselves. Looking at if there are policies that we need to definitely do negotiations.
So then that topic, um, and that's one that gets Miss Nolan, if she'll look into it to be able to respond, if that's a negotiated, uh, Mr. Robbins, negotiated agreement item, can you speak to that?
We've actually projected the cost, uh, to do that information, and it's something that we're.
And can you speak in the microphone? I don't know, we can do you as well here. I think the microphone's pushed down farther than, um, your, your height.
Yes. Uh, that is an issue that, uh, Mr. Robbins and I have been reviewing. We're doing some salary projections on the cost of implementation, so it, it is an issue that we're.
Any other questions at all for? Uh, for Miss Nolan on highly effective staff in goal two? Committee board members? I don't see any, so, um, I know that more may be coming between now and the next time we talk about this, and we've all got access to Google. So, thank you very much, uh, for coming. I think the one question I was gonna have, uh, we talked about a little bit early, uh, earlier, I'm definitely glad to see that we are, we're already making, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Kirk.
I just lost it, I saw it, it came back, it didn't have it, it came, and I just.
Okay, well, we can come back. Ms. Johnson?
Oh, I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, oh, it turned off, yeah.
It came back. Third time around, if I wait long enough, it'll stay with me again. One of the things that has always had a trouble to me as I looked at the reports that we get from you all, not because you're doing anything wrong, but, but the, the various codes that we have or categories that people can check when they leave, and they're not very helpful, all of them. And I'm wondering if there, if you've taken a look at, at, at those where they check whatever it is, it's personal reasons or health reasons or leaving town or new job. I mean, I, I, can we look at those and, you know, figure out ways that we can be asking questions, not be terribly intrusive, but that are more, more helpful to us to understanding why people might leave? I mean, they may be, um, you know, frustrated with working conditions or anything like that. I mean, I don't know why people leave. We know they retire, they move, they go home and raise families, you know, whatever, but, but there are a lot of reasons that people seem to go on and they move out to other districts. It's not because we're paying them more money. So I guess I'm, that's a, that's a little piece I wish we could get a little handle on, and I don't know how to do it. Um, but you're the expert, so I figured you'd come up with a magic way of doing that. But that is one of, one of my concerns all along. I'm not sure we get as helpful information on those exits as we used to like.
We could write a goal to collect more meaningful information on the exit.
You are working on that, you said?
We can add a goal on the exit, uh, interviews to make those more meaningful.
I, I think it would be helpful for us as a district to really get a better handle on it. You know, I, if, if people are angry when they leave, that's okay. I mean, I'm sad that they're angry with us, but it would help us understand maybe what some of the things are that people are unhappy about, and if we can figure that out, maybe we can make their lives here a little different. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
I was, um, I'm pleasantly, it was funny for me to see that all the applications screened are going to be, um, the people are gonna be interviewed within thirty days of receiving or the posting of the actual, um, job vacancy, yeah, posted, thank you, words, it's getting late. Um, but I have some questions regarding, um, getting back to employees, letting them know, you know, whether they receive the job opportunity or the interview or not, our level of communication with them around that, and I, I, I specifically come with specific concerns because, you know, I have state employees that have been applying for jobs in the district, and they, they come to me and say, well, why is the case? So I'm seeing some concerns about the timely reminder that, or the timely response to application for unemployment, for employment, whether that's, you don't, you didn't get the position or, you know, or address the other piece about when they might get interviewed for a specific position.
But I was glad to see that in there.
Hey, the district has had a practice of open-ended postings, particularly on the classified positions, that they're just open until filled. Uh, that creates a problem in, in terms of any urgency to conduct an interview or to get back to.
Are there any questions for Mr. Robbins? All right, goal four.
It said balanced budget, so you know, that's, that's, balanced budget facilities. That wasn't well. Any climate inequity questions? Ms. Dr. McCarthy?
Yeah, I think this is something that I've been meaning to get back to Dr. Anderson on, but we, we've talked, um, in the past, um, about the concept of the school-based health plan. Yeah, and that would fall in this?
Yeah, and it does need, it does need to be in there before the final one, it, it will be in there. I know, rather than tying ourselves to a particular place, we talked about that maybe being, uh, not the best way to.
Partner, yeah.
Um, would love to talk with you more about what that might look like, but there will definitely be a goal about, um, you know, implementing the school-based health plan.
Okay, absolutely. That's my question, I assume maybe something about the food pantries too, about expanding.
The food pantries, and also there's a homeless piece as well, when we talk about the, uh, shelter piece, because we've had conversations on that, so definitely would love to have more conversation. Thank you for mentioning that.
Reverend Williams? Okay. There are none there.
And goal five is career, uh, preparation and career placement.
Actually, I'm sorry, I, I did have one. Apologize, on four point two, uh, and it was, it was the one that we had that dealt specifically with utilizing, ah, so four point two-three, communication. Um, when I read that, I just wanna make sure I interpreted correctly. To me, it sounds like we're talking about making full use of our, um, our foundation and our, um, ability to go out and curry philanthropic support, to support our educational initiatives.
Yes, so there's, um, a couple of different opportunities we're looking at. One of them specifically that we'll be trying to implement first is related to the magazine and trying to get, uh, we can't sell ads to it, but what we can do is get financial sponsorships to support the cost of the magazine. Um, we've actually already had somebody reach out to us wanting to do that. Um, so we're developing a plan, what that cost would look like for them to place a sponsorship in the ad, uh, in the magazine, but the goal is to find those financial backers to help cover the cost of some of these things, but that money coming back into the district that can then be utilized to support other educational opportunities.
Excellent, that's wonderful. Um, I, I also interpret it in, in, in case I'm going too far, that's why I'm asking, not really trying to make much of a statement, but I also interpret this immediately, we would work with our foundation to try to, uh, design a package, vehicles that would serve as.
Yes, um, there are some other districts in the state who have packages already put together, so, an example, the box trucks that run around town, that are our trucks that have the billboards on the side. Um, this district in particular sells those, adds spaces on those trucks, and then that money goes back into their district, so it would be something that we can work with the foundation to utilize, what are those other opportunities to do that?
Okay, thank you. Good to know.
The final goal is career preparation and college and career placement. Are there any questions for Mrs. Caspers?
Would you mind, I guess, I, I can start, if you wouldn't, I, I don't want you to read through the entire thing, but if you could give us just the thirty-second version, I guess, of how we will best make use of T-Calc and integrate, um, you know, everything that's happening there, or use it as a base to, um, help us, you know, kind of bleed over some of those, uh, best practices for career pathways, need to summarize.
Sure. T-Calc is an opportunity for our students to apply some of the knowledge that they've learned in introductory and technical courses in a pathway of their interest. Now, I wanna say that we have a lot of pathways available in our school district, however, there are some pathways, like in agriculture, we do not have current pathways, but through T-Calc and program practices, either through design thinking, or engineering, or medical science, there are ways for them to pursue interest in those pathways even though we don't have them. And it is a professional-based, project-based curriculum where students work side by side with industry to gain those professional skills that are transferable to any career that they go to. We hope that they would apply it to particular technical areas so they can experience what those career opportunities could be, side by side with industry, but also for them to pursue their own independent projects that they would like to develop as well. So it has a flexible curriculum, it is not a rigid-type curriculum for them. So, it has a flexible curriculum, it is not a rigid-type curriculum for them, it is one for them to explore, to utilize post-secondary education, to utilize businesses, to use entrepreneurs, to expand on ideas, and where they want to go after high school. Does that help you?
It does, it does. I wanted to just make sure, I heard that explained. I love the way it's written in long form, but just I understood how it related together with the pathway approach that we have in high schools now that aren't necessarily a part of T-Calc. Some of the objectives that you have, I really liked, I thought, give you the gauge on whether or not we are effective in engaging, say, the business community, the number of internships or, excuse me, job shadows is increasing by 20%. I am curious how you came up with that number, maybe just because it sounds ambitious?
It is ambitious, and I like to have that high goal in front of me, but it also demonstrates to business and industry and community that we are committed in engaging and getting our students involved in there. And remember that when we have these types of partnerships, there's a lot of different means in which businesses and community members can partner. They can help us out with curriculum, they can be a mentor, they can provide a job shadow, they can provide projects for our students to work on, so there's a lot of opportunities. So, even though 20% sounds ambitious, those levels of commitment by business and industry and community people can be varying, depending on how it best fits for their organization and their business. And there might be an individual who is absolutely passionate about it, that they give a whole bunch, and then the energy helps to feed into other organizations and other ideas that we can expand. By doing this type of program, it also allows us the flexibility to meet the student need, the interest, provide support, and then also to encourage additional support from our community of businesses as far as engagement with our students and our families.
Could you briefly teach me about what is Career Cruising?
Sure. Career Cruising is a web-based software that has mechanisms in place for a student to develop what we call a portfolio. In that portfolio, the students are working on a plan of study according to what their interest is, and their interests can change. It could be that a student in eighth grade has expressed interest in environmental science, but as a result of exploring different aspects of that career, they find out they actually want to be an environmental biologist instead of an engineer, okay? So, through career exploration, they can find out what kind of education, what other courses should they pursue if they want to go into animal science versus plant science. So, then we can look at our courses studies and see what do we have available, what are we missing, and is there something out in our community that maybe we don't have to have a class on, but we can connect a student with a business or an organization where they can pursue it in job shadow and experience that. Also, through Career Cruising, the students are made aware of local and national scholarships. Parents can go through financial aid planning with the students, the students can develop a resume that can track their civic engagement, which is one of the requirements by KSDE that all students have to have some form of civic engagement before they graduate from high school, but it is a mechanism to track all of that. And so, that software takes our courses, the experiences, the volunteer, the work experience, any activities that they're doing, and put it all into one, and then when they graduate, one of the requirements by KSDE that that information needs to be exported so a student can take it with them. So, it's not at a dead end when they graduate from high school, that they have up to one year after graduation to export that, and we will help them with that. So, they'll have all that information as they move forward in their post-secondary education or career. Does that help you? It's a comprehensive package, and it's not something you can teach our teachers how to do in one year, it's going to be a learning process, and as the high school principals talked about tonight, there are activities through Career Cruising that we can do during mascot time, there are things that we can do within our core classes, as well as our CTE classes and other elective classes, so we can merge it together so students can see the relevancy of the courses they're taking and how it helps them to plan forward. The other part of it is family engagement. That's the other aspect we're hoping will come about, that we can engage our parents and our families more in our kids' education.
Thank you, Ms. Caspers.
Ms. Kirk?
Okay, the PLTW of Project Lead the Way, I thought I read it someplace that, I'm sorry.
I'm the one that never can hear, I didn't turn it on, I'm sorry. The PLTW program, Project Lead the Way, I saw it someplace, and I can't remember where it was, and we're going to be reviewing it and seeing whether we want to have it, but you have here as is something we're going to be doing, having to do with its implementation and certification, so I guess I need, I have no clue what that is.
Okay.
Do you want to speak to that?
Project Lead the Way is a curriculum that, it started out as a high school curriculum in engineering, biomedical science, biochemistry, and now they've added computer and information technology. It is a training program engaged with business and industry for our students that is science, math, technology, engineering, and they're even starting to bring in some arts into their program. Currently, we have PLTW programs in our engineering, in our biomedical or medical science. We are exploring a biochemistry because of the environmental science.
I think you're losing me, because is this a, this is a computer program?
It is not. It is a curriculum program that is designed where our teachers are trained to teach with projects. It doesn't have the professional side, that's what T-Calc adds to that, but it is project-based learning for students to apply the skills in science, technology, engineering, and math.
Okay, which is what we're looking at, at Jardine.
For STEAM.
Okay. They have a STEAM thing, right. So, this is something that is for high school kids, or for elementary, or?
It's all of it. They have now expanded from high school. We currently have an after-school program at Jardine in French.
Right.
We're in our last year of that grant, and what we want to explore is, because Jardine has a STEAM focus, we would like to continue PLTW. There is also a certification program with PLTW, and this may be part of your question. In that certification, students are able to earn college credit towards degrees in college as a result of that certification program. They also now have an elementary program, and this is something that Bishop is looking at, at piloting to see if that's something we can do once we have the signature school for Jardine. It is very comprehensive, and some investigation will have to come into play as far as cost and training and so forth.
Are there other questions from Mrs. Caspers?
Thank you, that was, I lost when I saw that, so thank you, I didn't know what that was.
Thank you, Ms. Caspers.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. As that is the last person and the last goal out of those five goals, and next step's when this comes back to you, some of the changes that are made, we'll go in and highlight that, so it's really easy to see the goals that were added, the changes that were made, the items regarding the HR component as well that you shared, so we'll make sure those are highlighted, we'll be bringing this back to you at the next board meeting. We thank you for your feedback, so this feels more like a discussion about the goals and us listening and making those adjustments.
Excellent, thank you very much, and definitely want to echo Dr. Anderson's words to you all, the folks that are actually doing the whole, thank you so much, hopefully just together and look forward to the discussion continuing. Okay, so our lone action item that we have, I think we are actually going to table, pass over, excuse me, we have another discussion. Yeah, but it's the action, yeah, so 20.1, I think we're going to, we have on the agenda in case we would have come to a point where we're ready to vote, clearly we're not. At this point, I'd better suggest that we table that, and if Ms. Lister will let me get away without a motion to table.
If it's helpful, you know, since this is coming back the four times, we, you know, we didn't anticipate, we don't anticipate action until almost February, so if it's helpful, we will make sure that we remove that action item even for the next meeting so that we have continued discussion and bring that back, so thank you for that piece.
Excellent. So, our first discussion item is the thought to move the February meeting to the Kansas Cafe.
And the purpose for that, and Mr. Robbins, if you want to add to that at all, well, Ms. Robbins, in fact, would you like to speak to that, sir?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. What we were thinking, if the board is in agreement, that that would be a good opportunity for us to plan ribbon-cutting ceremony and open house for our capital city high school building. The facility really does not have space enough, I think, where we could entertain an entire board meeting, so what we're suggesting is that we have the board meeting there at the Kansas Cafe, which is just a few steps away from the Capital City High School, and we could have a ribbon-cutting ceremony and open house and tour for board members and anyone interested from the public to come that evening and take a look at our brand-new facility there. I love that idea. Start the meeting at the same time. We could start it at the same time and then maybe have the tour instead of the executive session. If we need one, if we got something that comes up, we can. I'm seeing head nods. This is a discussion item, and it's where we hold our meeting, which is hardly a private overboard, so we don't vote for the board. Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to insert something that's not actually on the agenda, but I think we do need to have a discussion about this as a discussion item. The academic calendar committee, which we everyone loves, is getting ready to get to work again, and it's kind of a process I will be on it.
Right now, and think about this, we're going to look at two years out, we already have a tentative academic calendar for the year 1718, so we'll be constructing and making recommendations for the academic calendar of 1819, and get this, 19 and 20, 2020. Doesn't seem unreal? Yeah, so we will be working on that. So, we're looking to start, I'd really like to start on January 17th with our first meeting. I have kind of tentatively set January 17, January 24, and January 31. We'll meet for one hour, 5:30 to 6:30. So, that's, those are Tuesday nights, 5:30 to 6:30. And Ms. Harson's working on gathering her team together and who will chair, co-chair with me, the committee.
Any volunteers? So, I know that Ms. Kirk has served on the calendar committee before. Did you any time to sit?
Last round, it was Mr. Dr. Michelson and Dr. Morrison. Yeah.
Can I send this step forward?
Right now, January 17, 24, and 31, those are all Tuesdays, 5:30 to 6:30. And I'll send you an email with all the information. And you don't have to say it tonight, you can email me, but we need another board member if we can.
Everybody, so the request out there is that everybody check their calendar tonight and get back with Ms. Austin by end of the week, by tomorrow, if you can, and please copy Ms. Lister on it, so we, as a board, will know that we have another person, she can circulate that information. If it's not, then we can start.
Thank you very much.
So, we have another discussion item, the strategic plan, everyone's strategic planned out. Any additional conversation, we can have it now, now I think we're ready to move on to board member comments.